Thank you for being here today and helping out. Agenda item number three, President's Report, President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. Twenty-four Weatherford College student athletes have been named Academic All-Conference by the Northern Texas Junior College Athletic Association for the 2021-2022 academic year. Students named to the NTJCAC Academic All-Conference Team have earned a minimum of thirty-six hours of courses leading to a degree while maintaining a grade point average of 3.25 or higher. The same discipline that leads to success on the competition surfaces leads to success in the classroom and in life. Congratulations to Dr. Scott Tarnow Nubeski and his army of volunteers and presenters on the successful completion of the Fourth Annual Weatherford College Interdisciplinary Academic Conference. The event was yet another huge success. Vance Christie and his team of volunteers recently hosted over 3,000 high school students during an agricultural conference. Many of these students will undoubtedly choose to earn their degree at Weatherford College. Weatherford College Athletics continues to excel. In their first season, the Coyote Tennis Team will compete in the National Tennis Tournament next month, and the rodeo team will again compete in the College Nationals Finals Rodeo in June. Go Coyotes! Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Latonya Hines, Assistant Director of Admissions, has resigned effective 3/25/22. Deborah Riley, Student Services Clerk, has resigned effective 4/1/22. Mary Graber, the Testing Assistant, has resigned effective 5/5/22. Kenneth Logan, an Instructor in Information Technology, has resigned effective 5/31/22. And Shirley Brown, an Instructor and Department Chair in Mathematics, has resigned effective 5/31/22. We thank Latonya, Deborah, Mary, Kenneth, and Shirley for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. President, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Any questions or comments about those remarks? If not, we'll move to the agenda item number four, Consent Agenda Financial Reports and all the different parts of that item. Are there any questions or comments or any discussions about those items that are presented? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items that are presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Moving to number five, Consideration Possible Action Competitive Sealed Proposals on Construction Manager at Risk for Student Housing, RFP 10-22. Dr. Cantrell. Thank you, ma'am.
We sought proposals from the local community and advertised for others out there that would be bidding on a possible new athletic or the student housing facilities. We will, we entertain the proposals and looked at them on Tuesday. The committee met. Committee was made up of Dr. Farmer, myself, Dan Curley, and Mark Berg, the architect. We set and reviewed. The criteria was based on cost at forty percent and sixty percent qualifications. After reviewing and discussing, Imperial Construction was ranked the highest of all six companies, and at this time, that the Imperial would be who we would recommend for the CMAR services for the new student housing facilities. Are there specific questions that I could entertain, or Dan, or Dr. Farmer would be glad to answer those?
We have some people here from Imperial?
I don't see them. No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Dr. Farmer, any other questions? Okay. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a recommendation from the Construction Committee on Award of CMAR Services for the new student housing facilities to Imperial Construction Inc., authorize Dr. Todd Farmer to execute the final agreement upon recommendation from General Counsel. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. That motion is approved.
Thank you.
All right, moving to number six, Consideration Possible Action, Elect New Vice Chair Officer, Mr. Curley. What it says, sir?
I have distributed a proposed process, and I would emphasize-
No, 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 we're on six, Mr. Curley.
Okay, I thought that's what we were-
New Vice Chair Officer. Yeah. We lost Ms. Cody.
We jumped a stitch, didn't we?
That's okay, don't worry about it.
All right. That, I think, is the, we can do this now. You can, among yourselves, select from your existing members the person that should be the vice-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curley.
Chairman, okay. So I'll let you lead this discussion because I don't have the capacity to make a recommendation about that.
All right, so I'll just ask some questions. Is there any nomination for the new vice chair to succeed and take the place of Ms. Sue Cody, who's now resigned?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dan Carney.
I do, too. Yeah, I'll second it.
Do not, to, for Mr. Carney. Any other questions or comments at this time? Is there a motion to that effect?
I thought-
Is there a second? Can we show you as the second, Dr. Marleau?
I thought that's what I did, but that's-
Okay, all right. Motion and second to elect new Vice Chair Officer, Mr. Dan Carney. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? That motion passed. Congratulations, Mr. Carney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to take over right now? As the Vice Chair. I've got to leave here in just a little bit, so my wife told me if I'm not at home ready at three o'clock to go to Dallas, I'm in big trouble, so. All right, we'll move to number seven, Consideration Possible Action, Proposed Weatherford College Board of Trustee Appointment Process, Proposed Policy Concerning the Appointment to Expired, Unexpired Term of Board Members Leaving Office Midterm. Now, Mr. Curley, you're up.
Okay, all right. Well, first of all, I want to emphasize that what we're trying to establish here is a process and not a policy. The law requires that we do have a process if we're going to do an appointment. What I've sent to you, if you have any questions about how that works or doesn't work for you, then I'll certainly answer those questions. What I would hope we could do is if we could adopt this process, that if we like it, it works well for us, then we can convert it to a policy and make it a more permanent structure. The idea here is to have a more inclusive approach to getting candidates and to allow the board to receive those applications. They'll come to me first, and anybody who doesn't meet the legal requirement for being on the board, I will eliminate their proposal or their application, and I will send the rest of them to everybody. And each one of you can select a candidate, and we'll see who's left. I mean, it could be all of you select the same one, and we're done, but we bring them, after you've picked them, then we will invite them for a, an interview in a closed session, and then we'll come out of that closed session and have a vote to select the one that was to be considered, was considered in the closed session.
So when you say pick a candidate, do you mean out of the application?
Yes, out of the application. The ones that you get, select one, and then, like I say, we may have only two out of however many come in. We'll just see how that works out, and then we'll talk about it in closed session, and then come out and make a selection for the replacement.
How do you, how are you going to announce the filing time, and how long is the filing time going to be, and are you going to limit to a certain amount of applicants?
I couldn't quite hear you, but I think I know what your question was. We will advertise for the applications? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, yes. We'll publish in several different places. We'll put it on the website. We'll put it on social media. We'll put it in the Democrat, you know, so that there is a pretty widespread. And it will, the application will instruct those individuals that are interested that they have to have certain qualifications in order to be a board member, which includes living in the district and actually paying taxes in the district. So that's the way we'll get the candidates to apply to us. And in the event that no one applies, they can get a majority vote. We can start over, or we can revert to what we have done before, and that is just to appoint somebody without advertising.
How long will the application process be open? Will it be two weeks? Will it be a month? How long will that-
It's approximately a month.
Okay.
So it gives plenty of time for people to make a decision. The timeline is in the paperwork there, so.
Okay.
And I'd have to read it to tell you what it is.
And will you, will you stop it at, if you get an overwhelming response, will you keep it open the full month, or will you say, we're going to stop it at fifty applicants, or whatever? How are you going to, are you going to adhere to the timeline or to the number of applicants?
Well, I think that if we get a lot of applications, it would be, the best idea would be go with the stop point here. If we don't get any, we can open it back up and see if we do.
When you say stop point here, do you mean the timeline?
Yeah. We will, the application that we received during this period of time that we have set here for the deadline for making application would be the end of the application process unless we don't get anybody, and then we could talk about opening it back up.
Do you have the application completed?
I'm-
The application, do you have it completed?
No, not yet. Anybody else?
Do we want to include something if we come out of closed session and the board can't come to an agreement with a majority vote, that we would just delegate it to the President to select one of the candidates? Do we need anything like that?
Well, we can make the decision in closed session.
Okay, yeah, when we come out the vote, though, is what I mean.
But we can have a candid discussion in there about the qualifications and who we would consider supporting, and then come out and make a selection.
Okay.
To see who could get a majority vote out of the ones that we have entertained.
Okay.
Okay, just so that I'm clear, when you say Weatherford College Board Trustee Appointment Process, is this strictly and straight out of BBB Local and Local Government Code Chapter as quoted here?
It is.
And all the details under Board Must Adopt Process for Filling Trustee Vacancies, those are all out of the law? Okay.
The law is very, very vague. It says if you choose to appoint, you need a process. It doesn't say a policy, and it doesn't mean a permanent process. It just says a process.
Okay.
And historically, I have researched it and spoken to a lot of different people. You said, what is the process? What does the law say?
Yes.
And they said, it says nothing. You do what you, what you want to do, what suits your situation. So the idea of having this process gives us a little more structure than we've used in the past. And like I say, if it works well for us, then we can put it in the Policies and Procedures Manual, and it will become semi-permanent, so.
Okay, so just so that the people that are here today, what the, kind of, I guess, the bones of the process would be framed by the Board Must Adopt Process for Filling Trustee Vacancies, Determine Where Applications Should Be Sent, Person Directed To.
It's in here, yes, sir.
Right. Determine who will screen applications, subcommittee or board members. Determine the screening process, how long it will take. Determine timeline. One month per review. Present three to five applicants to board for interviews from the applicants.
Yes, sir.
Determine what will happen if no eligible applicants are found. Extend application period or timeline. Determine when, where interviews will take place and outline for interview process, list of questions, time limit, discussion thereof, executive session, public. Determine where, when advertisement will be placed. Clarify determining factors for appointment and criteria. Reference to Election Code 141A. Eligibility for Public Office will be referred to in the publication. And then the application would require a letter of interest to serve the remainder of the term, because this is to serve a, an unfulfilled term, remaining term. It would require, the application would require a resume or CV, three letters of recommendation addressing personal and/or professional qualifications. Is that correct, Mr. Curley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, in the, the proposed Weatherford College Board Trustee Appointment Process would begin April 14th, if there's something passed today, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and so based on that, pursuant to the Board Policy Legal and Local Government Code, what you've put together would adopt a process under these guidelines. Applications should be sent to Weatherford College General Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Board of Trustees will screen application, the board. The timeline would be April 14, 2022, for, to adopt the process today?
Yes, sir.
Are we in a position to actually do that today, you think?
I think we are, if you are.
Okay, the next date would be May 12, 2022, a 5:00 PM application deadline. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. May 13, 2022, application review process begins. Do we really know what that involves at this time?
It means that that's when the board members will begin looking at the, evaluating the applications.
Okay. Then, two weeks after that, on May 27, 2022, each board member will select?
Yes.
I've got to select, or is it?
Is that a may, or is it?
Yeah.
We're laying tests that it be a may. Yeah. We can change that, just that on there that way.
Please.
Mr. Curley, can I ask a question? You said that, and I'm fine with it, but you said that you're going to go through the list of applicants and then give us who you choose or deem qualified to be in that position?
No, only the ones that are not legally qualified were the only thing that I would attempt to eliminate.
Can we get a list of everybody who applies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, and so then, May 27 would be a selection process? If each, if any board member wants to sponsor an applicant, and that would inform the board and the General Counsel via electronic mail, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. June 9 would be the next date. Board interviews, deliberations of candidates in closed session, motion to appoint, vote on new trustee, possible swearing in. Do we, are we going to have a, basically, a list of questions that would be for everyone and not just certain, in other words, everybody would be handled according to the same criteria?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Do we have that ready yet?
No.
Okay, all right. Then, if there is a, after that, it would be June 23, call meeting to swear in the new trustee, if that's needed, is that, is that a good?
That's a suggested timeline, if everybody finds that acceptable.
Okay, if no eligible applicants are found, the board will default to the appointment process? I'm not sure what that means.
I think you might have an old copy-
Go back to old school, when you get to pick.
Well, that was the one that was sent out earlier. There was an amendment.
Okay.
And it eliminated that, and it says that we can either repeat this process or select another process.
Okay, and the part that's also questionable, if no eligible applicants are found, I don't know what that means, and I don't like that?
Well, if the only person, if only persons that apply don't live in the district or otherwise are disqualified, then let's start over.
All right, advertisement will be placed in Weatherford College website, social media, as well as forwarded to news outlets by Public Relations. Do we have a pretty good idea about how that's going to be done, and is it going to be transparent, I hope? Transparency there?
Well, yes, we'll, you know, it'll all be published.
All right. And then, it goes down to determining factors for appointment criteria, U.S. citizen, resident of Texas for one year, resident of Weatherford College, taxing district for six months, registered voter within Weatherford College District, eligible for public office, see eligibility requirements?
Then there was another one there that said serves the best interests of the board and Weatherford College.
Okay, all right. And none of these are out of line with what the, what other colleges are doing? I'm talking about community colleges.
Well, there, I don't know of any other college other than Austin College, and their process has not been finished yet, so they have not resolved all these issues.
Okay, all right.
I still have a question about the application. The timeline says today we're going to advertise and request for applications, but you said the application is not completed, and you told us we would see the application before it was actually sent out.
We can't do it today, it's too late, so, no, this, that, we have to do it next Monday or after that, but we'll have it ready to go.
Okay, but are you still going to send us the application for us to look at before you distribute it?
I can do that, yes.
Okay.
Any questions or comments beyond that?
So these criteria that they would be required to me, they're going to obviously need to submit something proving that they meet those criteria, too, correct? Resident, they're registered voter, those types of things.
Yeah, if they don't have that on there, I cannot assume.
Sure. I mean, even if they check yes that I am, we would need to get some kind of documentation to prove that they are.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I would assume there's no action item on this today, then, Mr. Curley?
I think that it would be, if we can accept this process as with the comments that are in there that we just talked about.
Okay.
It would be good to go ahead and get that done so we can do the next set of the processes, and I'll get the application and other things ready for you guys to see before I send it out.
Okay. Any questions or comments about that? Frame my motion for me, Mr. Curley, so that I can ask if somebody wants to make that motion.
The motion would be that we accept the process that was presented with amendments to it that are consistent with the discussion that we've had here today.
All right. You move that? Is there a second?
I see.
Motion second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like that passes. Mr. Curley, good luck.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate, and I really do appreciate what you're doing, and I realize that we're forging new ground, but I think it's very important, and I appreciate this so much. I know you're working hard on it.
It got to a certain point to where I had to make it up.
And I, Mr. Curley, I apologize for using my prosecutor approach to questioning, and it certainly was not, well, it's on.
Well, it was not a harsh cross-examination.
Thank you, Mr. Curley, I appreciate that. All right.
We're involved in basic research here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, searching.
All right. Does anyone feel like that there's any reason to continue on number seven, or can we move forward in the, okay. All right, we'll move to number eight, Reports, Academics As Presented, President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have been provided by Mr. Endy your academics and student services updates, and we have with us today Dean Janetta Cruz, who is going to present over our workforce program. So Dean Cruz.
You deserve applause for what you've been doing here the last few months, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you've been doing.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a workforce education report for you and some background and some new things going on in this new, beautiful, emerging technologies and workforce building. It all began back in 2017 with a phone call and a meeting from Dana Buckhold and David Setzer from the North Central Texas Workforces Solutions, simply asking us to discuss options on could we share space or lease space on a Weatherford College campus. The next two years, plans started to take shape pretty quickly. In 2019, we began our detailed vision and discussion plans and designs by visiting one of the newest and largest workforce facilities in the state, the Emerging Technology Complex at Victoria College. We gained tremendous insight from that visit and their team on how to proceed and things not to do as well. Huckabee was selected as the architect and led us through intents, visioning, and design planning. We were right at the beginning of those planning meetings when COVID hit, and it changed our world and how we all operated business. Our meetings switched to virtual and processed very quickly and picked right back up. While our last remaining old dorm building, Cows Hall, was being demolished on campus, we, my team, and in particular, we were all working on the design plans, particularly Valerie Hopkins for Cosmetology and Jessica McKee for Workforce Education. They worked tirelessly for the next year on designs, space layouts, equipment needs, flooring, finishes, selection of furniture, everything for the- flooring, finishes, selection of furniture, everything for the new building, also while transitioning and keeping their programs moving forward during the pandemic. I want to give a big shout out to them, to CBRE, to the business office and the purchasing office for helping us get through that and all their work and assistance on the procurement process. It was a lot. Now, fast forward, with Imperial Construction as our contractor through the groundbreaking in 2020, topping off in 2021, multiple manufacturing and supply chain challenges, and I believe it was a total of 61, maybe 62 weekly construction meetings, but you know, who's counting on those? But all the way to the huge turnout last month for our grand opening. So now, here we are, beautiful facility for all that work. As many of you saw during the grand opening event, all of the spaces were designed with attention to detail and purpose. We were very intentional about creating a variety of flexible learning environments for classrooms, labs, collaboration, and focus rooms with a mindset for functionality as well as future growth and needs. It's great, it's really, really great to walk in and see our students and community using this space as we envisioned in our design process. All of the teaching spaces will have the technology for virtual learning, in other words, Zoom capability, so that you can use audio cameras to deliver instruction to your students face-to-face and virtually simultaneously. The importance of that flexibility to provide instruction in various ways became even more relevant during COVID. Cosmetology was the very first program to move into the new building, and we're super excited to announce all 25 of our current students will be graduating next month. They are troopers. They started out their fall semester a little rough. They started out by loading a U-Haul, moving from mineral wells out to the farm, into the barn. But after a very quick makeover, we fondly call it the Beauty Barn. So they obviously were very top priority to get over here, to get their salon approved, and get them relocated as soon as possible. What a transformation. If you haven't been down there to see that transformation, don't leave today without going to go see cosmetology. Also, since they started last month, they've served over 256 clients in 19 days, and so they've generated sales in $6,870 just in those few days that they've been open here in this building. Both the cosmetology and the barber program will be offered in the summer and the fall, accepting new students. So be sure and go to check them out. Our health professions programs were the next to move over. You will see medical assistant, dental assistant, medication aide, CPR, and pharmacy technician students in the classrooms downstairs and in their lab on the second floor, getting hands-on skills training. We are currently seeking a subject matter expert in health professions to lead the development of additional programs in EKG technician and sterilization processing technician. Our industrial and automation students in drafting and machining are enjoying their classes in respective labs downstairs with the equipment set up to meet industry standards and skills training. Our new director of industrial and automation, Dr. Bill Alexander, he joined us Monday of this week, so he's quickly hitting the ground running and assisting us with development of these programs as well as certificates and a degree in automation and robotics engineering. And then, last but certainly not least, we will move over our information technology at the end of the spring semester down to the cybersecurity and computer labs on the second floor. Much of our equipment and our program development has been provided by our team seeking grant opportunities. Just within the last eight months, $1.36 million worth of grant funds have been secured for equipment, tuition, curriculum, and program development. Now, we have big outcomes and measurables to meet in the next few months. And looking forward for emerging technology, our focus will continue to be on labor market demands, industry-recognized credentials, and credentials of value for our students. We'll continue to seek ways to offer stackable credentials where students can start in a non-credit program, advance to a credit certificate, on to an associate degree, then to a bachelor, all here at WC. Now that the building is open and running smoothly, and I say that lightly, while I just have days on here, I'm hopeful that we can catch our breath just for a minute and then get back to focusing strongly on our students and programs. The facilities specifically designed for workforce programs have always been in our department goals and discussions. It just took all the pieces and the partners to come together at the right time to produce this beautiful facility that we're in today. I'm very, very grateful to all those partners who are so instrumental in making this become a reality. I do appreciate your ongoing support of workforce programs. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you so much for all you've done. I just, I know you see all the awards, but the rest of the public doesn't, so you, I think you've just done a phenomenal job. And the cosmetology school, how, because when I tell people it's open for public use, and they, they look at me kind of shocked, and I really want to get the word out. So how are you guys promoting that?
We do, we actually have social media, website, we put out feelers on there. Clients, students post it, that's our biggest one. They post it and come out there, but we have salon hours.
Okay.
They start, don't quote me exactly, but it's about 9:30 till 2:30.
Right.
They do theory in the morning first thing, and then they have to finish up in the afternoon. But every day, they do take clients.
Okay.
And you can call the number and get an appointment and come on in. We do take walk-ins, we prefer appointments, that way we can.
Sure.
Plan ahead.
Sure.
But yes, we do take clients every day.
Okay.
So, call the salon and come on in.
Those are impressive numbers, so.
Yeah, thank you, they are. I didn't realize we had served that.
Yeah, it's really impressive.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to publicly acknowledge Dean Cruz for her exceptional leadership of what truly has been nothing less than a Herculean team effort to make this entire process come together. So, great job, well done to you and your entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Max?
Oh, yeah.
Would it impose on any of the, her or somebody to give any of us that would like to go down and tour quickly, tour that after this meeting? Could that be a way?
Dean Cruz, can you, can you take Mr., Dr. Marlett on a tour?
And anybody else that'd like to go?
He wants an individual tour.
He just said that.
Oh, I didn't hear that, Dr. Marlett.
He'll see you there about 7:00.
He said he can bring other people with him. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right. We'll move to number nine, future agenda items remaining, President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are moving into budget season next month. Dr. Cantrell will be bringing to you the preliminary 2022-2023 budget report. That concludes item number nine.
Questions or comments on that? Not moving to announcements, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. April is typically one of our busiest months here at Weatherford College, and it's no different this year, actually even more busy than normal. You notice on your sheet a number of items. I won't go through them all, but I'll highlight a couple of them. We have an opera showcase on April the 21st, highlighting the works of Stephen Sondheim. Of course, that's in the Alkec Center. A student art exhibition the next day, April the 22nd, and that evening, it's all about the music. I think this is version three of Duane Duret's program. It's always a great program there in the Alkec. And then, we have our residence hall groundbreaking, April the 26th, at 4:00 at the site. You know where the site is, at College Park in Park, and we'd love to have all of you there for that, of course. We have our very first Vet-Tech pinning ceremony, May the 3rd, 6:00, in the Strain Community Room. Excited about that. And then, we have the Region 5 North softball tournament. Eight teams from across our region will be here at Stewart Field. That's May 5th through the 8th for that tournament. And don't forget about Taste of Parker County. It's actually on the day of your next board meeting, May the 12th, 5 to 8, at Heritage Park. That's all we have.
Mr. Baker, any, any questions or comments about that? Anybody?
You said the Vet-Tech pinning ceremony, 6:00 PM, Strain Community Room, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right. Moving to the number 11, closed session. It's now almost 20 till 3. We're gonna, going to close the public session and adjourn for a closed session. And... Is there a motion to adjourn at this point?
There is.
Second? I want to go to say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned to the closed session, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have it's now ten minutes after three or thereabouts and we are back in session one again. We've completed item, agenda item number 11, our closed session deliberations. Item number 13 on the posted agenda is consideration of possible action for real property. There are no items to be acted upon under number 13, or 12. Item number 13, consideration of possible action, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Mr. President, do we have any items under that?
No, sir.
Item 14 is the adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.